It's gotten quiet, so I assume everybody's ready to meet and we're late. And that's my fault, nobody else is looking at things. I was in court yesterday from 9:00 yesterday morning until after 6:00 yesterday afternoon. And we'll be in court other times that long or longer. Our document is a mess, and I'm working on it. I can solve it in one day or one week. And everybody that's involved, which is the county attorney and me and the county clerk, are all working on the agendas and the case loads and trying to get them in manageable shape. That's not anybody's problem but ours, and I would just say that so that the general public will know what's going on with it. And it's not one that anybody that I'm aware of started on purpose, but nonetheless, we're stuck with what we got and we're working on it pretty steadily. And commissioners are all busy with that and other things. Everybody's working, I think now, and I think we're all on the same page. So, with that said, I welcome everybody, glad that you're here, hope that you're here in the right frame of mind and didn't come to argue with the court. You have a commissioner that you voted for, you have me that all of you probably didn't vote for, but some of you did, and I got elected at any rate. And I'm here and available nearly every day. I come in anywhere from 8:00 to probably 8:30, 9:00 sometimes, depends on what's going on. And I stayed elected, I stayed here today until after 6:00, we were out in court. And that will continue until we get control of the document, which we don't have yet, I don't think. But we're working on it. So that said, and that's the welcome you get today. I would call a roll, but anybody can see that all of the commissioners and the county judge are present. So if whoever's keeping minutes will note that all of the court is present this morning, and I don't think we have to have them stay here. And we might change that later, but if anybody questions whether we're here or not, I've taken a picture of who's at all of these meetings, and we'll have the evidence of who's Opening prayer, I haven't asked anybody if you'll all stand.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed on us in our journey through life and in our occupations and our various activities. We would ask that you continue to bless us as you have in the past and be with us every day in every part of our life, not just in this court, but in everything that each of us do. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got it set up today for now, the agenda of the citizens to be heard, and I don't know whether anybody has signed to say anything, but there'll be a three-minute limit on each person. And that will be your participation in this meeting today. This is a business meeting. If any of the commissioners want intake from anybody else, the commissioners will ask for it. And if not, I don't think we'll be asking for a public speaking and taking time from what we're trying to do. So, that said, citizens to be heard, is anybody signed up to be heard?
Yes, sir, we do have one signed up from item 15.
Well, just to be heard right now. We don't need it on item 15. So whoever that is, who signed up?
Mr. Gardner, do you want to speak?
Withdrawn. We'd be happy to hear you if you want to say anything, and have the time to do it.
Hi. I'll be brief.
All right.
Good morning. Item 15 is regarding restoration of the courthouse. I believe that we're into this courthouse, we need to spend the money, even if it's our own. I would like to ask that the commissioners' court, when the contracts are finalized with Mr. Fisher and we get moving down the road of the courthouse, and after his estimate is in, that there be a cap, we put on the restoration of the courthouse with some amount of money. The commissioner's court would have to make a decision at some point, you know, that enough money is enough money, and you're gonna just, you can't spend our whole treasury just on the courthouse. We have a priority in the cap. So I'd just like to leave that with our consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, that was it.
We'll have a reading of the minutes from the previous meetings. Have you got any minutes?
We don't have them ready yet at this time, they'll be ready for next meeting.
How many meetings have we had that we don't have them for?
I'm not sure.
Why don't we have? They just haven't been prepared.
No, sir.
I think just December's meeting, Judge. I've got, I think just December's meeting, I've got-
Both of them or just the last one?
The last two.
The last two. All right, and then we'll have another one after that. So-
Oh, we have three meetings.
I want the minutes, so the three meetings, there's no reason why we shouldn't have them when we have the next court meeting, okay?
Yes, sir.
Would you pay that to the clerk? I appreciate it. Item 7 on the agenda is to acknowledge the acceptance of a $500 donation from Ron Hyde, given to the department, I don't know what this department is, who's this?
Judges, be the sheriff's office.
And it was a donation to the sheriff's office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Excuse me, I was looking in the wrong direction. I know who you are, Sheriff. That's authored by you, and you go ahead with your report, I appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Hyde usually donates every year to the sheriff's office, and I'm just bringing to the commissioners' court to their attention that he's donated the $500 to the sheriff's office.
Did he put any kind of control on it of how he wanted it spent, or just left it up to the discretion of the sheriff?
Yeah, left it up to me, as far as-
And that's what he does every year, every day, thanks for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you express our thanks to him? We appreciate it very much, and we appreciate any citizen who's interested enough in any part of the county operation to make donations and to help us in any way they can. Thank you, and thank him for us, if you will.
That's our word, sir.
All right. Acknowledge acceptance of a $50 donation from Mrs. Rudolfo Elgaona, I'm sorry, Elgaona, and Jennifer Leal, given to the department to be used at the direction of the sheriff's office, by the sheriff.
Yes, sir. She also came by the office and met with me there and spoke to me.
Both ladies?
Yes.
Did they make that donation to be directed any specific way, or left it up to you and your department to use it however you felt like was the best way?
Yeah, left it up to me, as far as what the money is.
All right, I would express the appreciation of the commissioners' court, and I'm sure you expressed your appreciation, and we like help from anybody that will help us, and any ideas they have or whatever. I hope everybody who's listening that is on the court, that's in your office, and in the other offices, the elective offices, and the offices that are not elective but are hired. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9 is a canvas of the January 6, 2015 special election authorization for signature by the presiding officer of the canvassing authority, which is the commissioners' court. Authored by Karen O'Gill. Karen, are you here?
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
If I just looked in the right direction, I wouldn't have that problem. Rest of the family's not too bad, by the way, I'm a woman, sorry.
Today we're, I don't think it's on. Today we're canvassing the January 6, 2015 special election, which was for the House District 17 seat. And in total, and this will include provisionals, just in case anybody wants to know, because it'll be a little bit different than what you get on election night. But anyway, in total, we had the, Tom McDonald, who is a Democrat, got a total of 30 votes. Shelley Cartier, also a Democrat, 25 votes. Brent Goldman, 66 votes. John Sirier, he's also a Republican, got 388. Linda Curtis, got 10, she's independent. Our total vote for that evening and early voting was only 519 out of 7,000, almost 8,000 registered voters. And so I just need a motion to accept the canvas, and a second and all that, and then I'll give you this form.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion and second to accept the canvas, any further discussion by the court?
All in favor?
Go ahead, Judge.
No.
The office of John Sirier called and asked, I'm not on, but I'm loud anyway, anyway, the court, commissioners, citizens, everyone that possibly could contact the governor's office and ask that they expedite the runoff. The person who came in the distant second has not conceded, therefore a runoff is necessary, and as long as this drags out, this area does not have a representative in the legislature. So, their request was that everyone individually or artificially contact the governor's office and press them for an early runoff date.
Thank you.
And I just need you to sign up, and Judge John.
All right, patient down this way. You're on.
And then you go to the clerk to be entered into the record.
Okay, there needs to be a vote on the acceptance of the January 6, 2015 special election. Is there a motion to accept the canvas?
There wasn't.
There was, and a second, then you made the motion.
I wrote it in there.
Okay, we've got, well, not a piece.
All in favor of the approval of the canvas, signified by saying "Hi," all opposed, no, all voting for it. So the canvas is approved.
So the next step is that I'll turn that into the Secretary of State, and I think we're the last county in the district. I just, I want to follow.
Okay. Do you have another report?
I'm gonna say it.
Okay. All right.
Item 10 on the discussed approve/disapprove resolution in support of online voter registration as presented to Texas County election officials by the Texas Association of Elections. Election official authored by Karen O'Gill.
This past week, we held a meeting of the Texas election, the Texas Administration of Elections, or Texas Association of Election Administration, I'm sorry. And in that meeting, we discussed and passed a, we passed this resolution and also a resolution to request that all counties who are members of that association also sign it. I did give each of you a copy, is it all right if I read it quickly?
Yes.
What we're asking is, we're of course looking for online voter registration, and want to, you know, move on with today's technology, make it as easy as possible to register to vote. So the resolution reads, whereas Texas voter registration laws require voter registrars to distribute, receive, decipher, process, and archive millions of voter registration cards each year. And whereas the current process for registering to vote on paper applications in Texas is inefficient, expensive, and error ridden, and whereas 24 states have already authorized their citizens to register to vote through online systems that have proven to be more secure, dramatically lower cost, more accurate, and for many voters, easier to access. And whereas Texas already authorizes voters to electronically register to vote, we're updating information online at sos.gov. And whereas a Texas online voter registration system would be more secure, because Texas driver's license numbers, as well as audit numbers, which are unique to each Texas driver's license, would be required in order to be able to register online. And whereas online voter registration would enable state and local voter registrars to dramatically reduce mailing and added entry costs, a study of the Arizona online voter registration system determined that their costs were lowered from .83 cents per card to .03 cents. And whereas online voter registration would enable voters in this state with one of the lowest voter registration rates in the nation, an easy online alternative to obtaining, completing, and mailing paper applications. And whereas the Secretary of State would continue to reimburse counties the same amount for voter registration cards processed electronically or by paper. And whereas online registration would in no way constitute a mandate on local voter registrars, voter would continue to choose to complete the paper voter registration application, and voter registrars are already required to receive electronic voter registration applications from UPS. Therefore, be it resolved that the Karnes County Commissioners Court urges the Texas Legislature to authorize Texans to have the option to register to vote by electronic means that conforms to the security requirements of the Texas Secretary of State and the Department of Public Security.
Thank you. Discussion of this resolution, does any of the court proceed anything?
That's what the, our initial registration, not a renewal?
They already can do it for renewals, but for initial registration, it's okay.
I'm a paper person, so would I continue to get the card or mail, or do I have to go do it?
Getting your card in the mail is continuous, no matter whether you register online or in person, and, you know, it's still that way, even with the lawsuit.
Anybody else on the court? I'm, when we speak about it, I'm old patient, because I'm old. I have a gift session. I don't think our voting ought to be done this way. I think it needs to be done with each person cased in a vote. And of course, you could say, and argue, you could say and argue that-
No, I just want to make sure you understand that it's registering to not have the votes.
This is registering, but it's a preliminary to cased in a vote, is it not? You have to register, or you want us to have to register. And we used to pay vote tax, and don't anymore. And I'm for the registering, I mean, I'm against the registration of us having to register online, not register. I think we, the system we have, we have, how many registered voters?
Currently, we have close to 8,000, we have 7,800 in 192.
And we have how many voters in this last, uh?
500.
It looks like to me that you ought to be speaking for more voter participation and not worry about the 8,000 that we have registered. That, I just don't feel like that we need anything different, that we need to attend to what we have. And we're not very good at doing that sometimes, and I'm not even better than anybody else is. But I do vote every time, and I don't understand people who do not vote. That's one of the things that's very, very dear to us. But at any rate, I'm against it, I said we'll vote against it. Any other comments or consideration?
I think it's just a new trend that's coming out, the younger population is more technology savvy than some of the older people are, and I think we're just trying to get the younger population to be more involved in the reflection process, as well as maybe some that just don't want to come to the courthouse, or some that can't get to the courthouse, so just another alternative route for them to register.
Any other comments? I hear you, Shelby, and will that make more vote? And the answer, I'm gonna tell you, and you mark it down, and come back and talk to me about it later, is no. That's not why you vote, because it's easy. I've been watching it a long time, probably more than most of you.
I don't have a personal, I mean, I have a personal opinion as far as that goes, you know, I believe in it, but I did want to state that, you know, okay, so now we have 8,000 registered voters, we have 500 of them vote. If we had 10,000 registered voters, perhaps we would have had 700 people vote, so that's still 200 more votes, more people out there to vote.
Would that have made a better result?
I would hope so. It would have made more people speak.
Well, to have a better result, you wouldn't have to have a different result. Would it have made a different result, you think?
It's possible.
Possible, but not likely, in the past it hasn't worked that way, I think you could safely say. I've watched it very carefully, and you have, you're involved in-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a numbers person, and I just look at, if I have, you know, 10,000, then that percentage of 10,000 is more votes, so more people expressing their opinion. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, you've said it, we understand. Anybody else? Anything you want to say? All right, all in favor of the resolution in support of online voter registration?
Nobody's voting.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that one.
Second. Motion dies for life, for second, so we'll move it.
I would like, I'm sorry, DePere. I would like to go to your office and sit down with you, and not against it, I'm not a board right now, but I've been hearing different things right, and I haven't had enough time to go do this, I just read it last night.
Okay.
Let me go by your office, and let me sit down with you and go through this, a couple things that I don't understand, that we're just gonna be wasting time here, but I'm bringing it up, but I'll go to your office and I'll discuss it with you.
All right, no problem.
We will set this up on an agenda, for a non-action agenda, where we can talk about it, and we can do that. If everybody will talk to whomever they want to, to see what you're ready about and what you think you ought to do.
So we can have a workshop on this?
Yes, sure.
Is that all right, Karen, if we'll have a workshop on this?
Yes, that's right.
We don't have to ask Karen if it's all right?
Yeah, if that's your offer.
Well, I understand that, Judge.
Okay.
Just trying to be polite.
Well, I, okay, we've voted at this point, and there'll be some kind of workshop or something that's a non-voting thing, and we'll discuss this further.
Okay, Judge.
All right. We're down to, I guess, item 11, 11 on the agenda, discuss approve application of emergency management performance grant due 1/31/2015 authored by Susanna Kaliba. And I believe Susanna's not here today, she had something scheduled that she couldn't be here, talked to me about it, and I told her that as far as I was concerned, it was something that we would do, that I didn't have any idea what the rest of the commissioners' court, how they felt about it. But at any rate, what's the, what's the, what does the court want to do? And you'll have to tell me if you want to approve this, or put it off, or if there's a problem with it or something. I know of none, but I can't say for sure that it's not. Does anybody have any ideas about it that you want to share?
I'd like for the county to allow her to do it. This grant, it provides funding for various resources, that, as for drills, it could fund her salary, it could fund, there's a lot of different parts of this grant that's available. Normally, the first time you apply for this grant, you do not get it, but at least you're on the record for trying to get it, because it's a popular grant, it's a statewide grant. The grant holds you to certain types of requirements that you have to conduct, and reports that you have to submit quarterly. It's a good, it's a good thing now that we have a full-time emergency management coordinator. So I, I'll make the motion that we allow her to participate, to apply for this grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it, but change was on this motion was made by Shelby. Any further discussion from the court?
Would this require an action in sort?
It possibly could for certain parts of the country.
Okay, let's see, I guess the next thing is, would by receiving this grant, we'd be adding a tier of bureaucracy to the count?
No. Emergency management is already in place, all it does is providing other resources, tools to help provide that office's certain function.
That's fine with me, as long as it doesn't require a secretary and another administrator, and that it's something else.
This here could probably fund her salary.
Okay, that's okay.
Any further discussion?
The grant is not a, I don't know what exactly what amount she's decided to put in for again, but as I said, normally, you just don't make, you don't get the first one, you get the second one, so it could probably put the next budget in.
I may be wrong, it seems to me that she told me it was for $7,000, and that may be totally wrong, that's sound wrong.
That's what she got the last grant, Judge.
That was the co-grant.
That's what we got.
That was the last grant.
We got $7,000.
It was that donation, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, I don't know that that's what she wanted to ask for, but at any rate, we have a motion. Second, is there any other discussion?
Well, if, you know, if there's a concern about how much money it would be, we could bring, you know, as she, we could allow her to apply, and have her come back and report to the court with the amount that she requesting, and some of the new points, and what's going on.
We're only approving the application for the grant at this point.
That's where I understand, this would be approval to apply for the grant.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote, and all in favor of the motion to approve the application for the emergency management performance grant due January 31, 2015, and authored by Susanna Kaliba, signified by raising your right hand? All voting for it. Item 12 on the agenda, discuss approve/disapprove the authorization of the justice of the peace proceeding forward to hiring expert that's offered in the investigation of a pending case, her view, author that.
Yes. In May of 2013, Judge Chotella conducted an inquest in Yarlungi, and he determined during that investigation that the cause of death was natural causes. The family of that deceased victim hired a law firm, and they are contesting the decision made by the justice of the peace, and they hired an expert named Sparks, B.C., a medical examiner out of Montgomery County, to look at the police reports and look at the photographs of the four-wheeler accident, and that- And that pathologist and expert made a decision and a recommendation that the cause of death was not natural causes, but was an accident. I worked with Judge Sotella in trying to go through that expert testimony and give him my attitude and my knowledge of what went on. And we tried to get by without hiring an expert. It's my opinion that we do need to hire an expert to look at the deposition of the pathologist out of Montgomery County and give Judge Sotella the benefit of that expert before he has to make a decision as to whether or not he's going to change the death certificate from natural causes to accident. The reason I think most of that was taking place is that there's an insurance policy, and it's tied to that, that is the basis for the contest at this time.
What is, what is the cost of this for the...
I have not talked to anybody, because I wanted to get the commissioner's authority to go forward before I did anything else. I would not anticipate more than five thousand dollars.
Is Judge Sotella here?
He is not here.
I would be concerned over the cost of hiring an expert, but I'm not against it without a lack to know that which it's going to cost us.
Yeah, that's the obligation, the commissioner's court to go ahead and contact one, find out what the cost is going to be, and then come back and maybe tell the commissioner's court about it in a different session.
I mean, that would leave me finding out much...
I mean, we're just trying to resolve this for this family as best we can. And Judge Sotella is not going to be comfortable unless he has another expert to look at what the deposition and makes some decisions.
Well, I think we need to back him in his quest for trying to get an accurate result of the death, what caused the death.
Was there an autopsy done?
No. This was the time when we, Judge Sotella just started, and then it started in his...
He could have ordered an autopsy and did not, because of his, perhaps because of his inexperience.
Well...
I won't say that, I don't know.
If you, he took the evidence he had from the sheriff's office and from what he did as far as his investigation concerned, and based upon that evidence, he made a call as to cause of death. And there was no, you know, that was just a call that he made. And it is being contested at this time. It's an unusual process. I've not seen it done where they try to change a death certificate, but it's possible to do it.
What would be the ramifications to the county that we did not do that?
Well, I'm not sure that anything would happen to the county if we just said we're not going to do anything, and we left it like it was. But the family of the deceased individual needs to have the benefit, in my opinion, of the best advice Judge Sotella can give. And if Judge Sotella made a mistake, it needs to be changed, and he can't make that decision unless he has an expert that can give him that advice.
The expert, there was an expert from Montgomery County already, right, that came down and...
Yes, and he said...
Why can't he go off, just ask him, why can't he just go off the bat?
Well, because it's caused by Judge Sotella to change his death certificate from natural causes to accident. And if you change it to accident, then the life insurance policy of the deceased is...
Does not apply.
Could apply. Could apply. And that is, and if the family's entitled to those benefits, Judge Sotella, in my opinion, wants to do the best he can to make a decision what, that is right in the case. And we can't, they don't want to do an exhumation, the families don't, and Judge Sotella don't want to do an exhumation to make a, any determination at this time. We're just going off expert testimony, and the evidence that the sheriff's office has given the experts and what Judge Sotella has.
I'm not feeling for our families, so I would move that we authorize our county attorney to go forward with the availability and cost on this, and perhaps get that from the court.
I don't have any problem. I would just, I helped Judge Sotella because he asked me to, and I, I think the objective is trying to be to get the best information possible for the judge, so he can make the right decision, because it will be appealed, and we don't, we don't...
Maybe we can, maybe we can do this, we put a cap on it, it goes anything above the cap, and it comes out of...
It's not an issue, it's as far as time is concerned. If you want me to talk to somebody and come back and tell you how much it's going to cost, I don't have any problem with that, I can do that at the next...
Where is the money going to come from?
Well, it's going to have to come out of a budget amendment at this time. I don't have any money to do it, and Judge Sotella doesn't have the money needed to do it.
Is there not any miscellaneous funds that are...
I'm not sure.
We have a contingency fund that it can come out of. Do we have to authorize it to come out of that contingency fund, this court has?
It just has to be noted that that's where it's being paid from, because we set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for unforeseen things that might come up, so we wouldn't have to do a budget amendment.
All right, I'm not even sure if we've got that much available.
We don't anymore, because we've done some spending out of it already.
Uh, what kind of spending have we used it for so far?
We have funded the deputy treasurer's position in the treasurer's office that was not in the original budget.
Okay, is that all?
That's all I can think of at the moment.
Okay, this letter, this request, though it says that there is a fee for the above submitted bill, so I guess the company included in the paper some of this. It would be your report, witness statements, or photos, or other evidence you determine the cause of death. So I imagine that it would offset some of this cost.
Well, the only person now that is out on the limb is Judge Sotella. He's got to make the decision, and whether or not the family have paid for this expert, I don't know, and I have not talked to the, it would not be something I would think the lawyers on the other side would agree to at this time. They hired the expert, and they're satisfied with their expert and what he's going to, what he said, and that is, it's an accident. And they would be satisfied if Judge Sotella would change his finding on the death certificate to a read accident as opposed to a natural cause. And I don't know that Judge Sotella would do that without something fun, he's just not comfortable with...
Why don't you look into it, talk to Judge Sotella, and report to us back at the, might be in...
May I go ahead and talk to an expert and get an estimate as to the cost?
Sure. I mean, we would need to know that, of course.
Should I give you that information on this one?
Real emotion?
I understand.
I have one question. Herb, do you think that getting another expert's opinion is going to convince the insurance company? Do you think they're still going to ask for an exhumation and autopsy?
The insurance company is not going to ask, they're not asking for an exhumation. And I can't...
Well, they don't have to pay at this point. They don't have to pay for an accident, do they?
That's right. The death certificate is controlling right now. If Judge Sotella changes it, then I don't have any idea what the insurance company might do. I don't even know the side of the policy, to be honest with you.
I remember the circumstances now. It took me a few minutes for the computer drive to get there, but this fellow was working for the Shindler Dairy at the time, and they found him dead, slumped across the four-wheeler. And it was assumed that he had passed from either a heart attack or some physical situation such as that.
I just didn't give you his name, because it's not our secret, I was just trying my best.
We have his death certificate here in front of us, right?
I, you know, so I'm kind of focused a little bit more on where you're at now, if you didn't register it first.
The cause of death in the death certificate is noted as myocardial infarction, which is a heart attack, I believe. I'm not a medical person, but I'm...
And I'll come back to the commissioner's court.
I think you need to look into what the cost of it and what's happened so far exactly. And if you don't mind, do we have a motion?
Motion to do that, inquire, report back.
Well, second. Okay, any further discussion, commissioner's court? All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye? Aye, all voting aye. All voting for it. Thank you, Herb. We're on item thirteen now in the agenda, and it's discuss, approve, disprove bonds for the various county some officers from positions. It includes county judge, county commissioners precincts one, two, three, and four, county clerk, district clerk, justice of the peace precincts one, two, three, and four, the tax assessor-collector, and why are there two on here for you?
One is the county, and one is with the comptroller, right?
No, not what we're looking at.
They are two separate bonds, one is county requirement, and she has a bond requirement with the state comptroller also.
Which one is the more expensive?
I don't know. I think the comptroller is the nice...
So one's a hundred thousand and one is ninety-six thousand. It just seems to be somebody don't know which one's which. When does this have to be done by?
The billing date was the first, because that was the effective date.
So we have this, but we haven't paid for it yet?
Correct, it's in the bills today to pay.
Okay.
The state premium is four hundred and eighty, so that would tell me that's the lesser, the ninety-six thousand dollar one.
And the hundred thousand...
Is the county's, and that premium is five hundred dollars.
Okay. And there's the county attorney, one constable of four precincts, a sheriff, bond, county supervisor, and public employees honesty bond, the amount shown on each of the commissioners' agendas for today. And each bond is for a calendar year period that's beginning January first. Okay. Discussion?
What is the public employee honesty bond covering?
It covers all the employees of the county.
Oh, where's the...
Not officials elected or appointed.
Mine's one thousand dollars, I know, but the county surveyors is five hundred dollars, and where, there's some other, one, two, three, four, that are one thousand dollars, that's the four constables. I'm not sure whether, I don't know why they would have thought the county judge, who's a lawyer, is one of the, one of the most honest people. It's the same, but they say quite right to me, having practiced law fifty years here, noticed that one went on. But at any rate, I suppose that's what it's been historically.
Yes, it's the standard requirement across the state.
This is a state requirement that we have to have them in these amounts.
That's the minimum you can have, you can have...
We can set it up as much as we want to. Okay. Court, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by James to approve the bonds? Second by P, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the approval of the bonds, signified by raising your right hand? All voting for it. Well, I guess I should call for votes against, even though I'm all voting for it. I'm not sure anymore what to do about it, but all voting for it, motion carried. We will have the bonds in the amount shown. Item fourteen, discuss, approve, disprove increase in the bond in county business mileage reimbursement rate based on IRS increases increased effective January first, two thousand and fifteen. Well, one of that was authored by you, what was the increase?
IRS has increased the allowable business mileage reimbursement rate to fifty-seven and a half cents per mile. It previously was fifty-six. Historically, the county has always used IRS as the guideline for reimbursement.
Court members, any comments, questions?
I'll make the motion to approve item fourteen.
Motion by Commissioner Zaliz to approve item fourteen, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Gower, any other discussion? All in favor of the increase in the mileage figure from fifty-six to fifty-seven and a half, which is the rate approved by IRS at this time, signified by raising your right hand? All voting for it, motion carried. Item fifteen, discuss, approve, disprove review of County Courthouse historical... I'm starting historical. Historical renovation, excuse me, Sue. The historical renovation project included priorities and much of the grants from the Texas Historical Commission authored by Jeff Teppin.
Jeff? All right, at our last meeting last week, we talked about the easement and the money for phase one B for the roof renovation. And there were questions that the court had with respect to the previous grants and easements that had been enacted and signed for phase one and one A, and also the budget and schedule concerns that might have been agreed to or published with respect to one B and then phase two moving forward. I've done some research on that and gotten some documents, so I can hopefully answer some of those questions for Sue and Mariana here as well, they can also help answer questions. I was unable to get, as of today's date, a copy of the easement for phase one A, but I have a copy of the easement in phase one. Phase one, as you might recall, was the first steps that were made. In phase one, we got a grant, I believe, of two hundred and fifty, no, sorry, what is it? Six hun- yeah, six hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred even?
It was six hundred seventeen, six hundred seventeen thousand dollars. And in phase one, the work that was done, it was an emergency grant. The work that was done was for west side elevation, replace some windows, there were metal windows, back to the wooden windows. There were roof repairs made, there were site drainage repairs made, and there was no schedule attached to that easement for that funding with respect to the remainder of the work to be done on the courthouse. Of that, in that project, where the records I found show was that the total project budget for phase one was nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We got the grant, as I mentioned, of six hundred seventeen, eight sixty-six, and then the county funded the rest, which is about three hundred and eight thousand, so nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. It's a difference of twenty dollars. It's different than twenty dollars in two figures I've seen. But anyway, the county funded about thirty-three percent of that work. And I haven't seen final construction costs or final accounting, but the documents that I have show that that was the case. So, we received a six hundred thousand dollar grant for phase one. Phase one B, I don't have as much detail, and I wasn't able to find the agreement yet. I've asked the historical commission to give me copies of those documents. And I'm waiting to see that from them. But the documents that I do have show that the foundation repair was done under phase one A. And it appears, if I'm looking at the right numbers, that the total project budget for that scope is two million, three hundred seven thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. And like I said, I don't have the funding because I don't know what the final amount that grant was. Sue may have that information. Well, how much was that?
Well, the final amount that we spent on that was one million, eight eighty-six.
On what, Sue?
On the stabilization of the foundation.
Was that much again?
We spent one million, eight eighty-six.
Those county funds for total project?
It's total project.
How much was the county? Does he have that information?
On the county, it's one million, three sixty-two, nine four.
Okay. So, it appears we got a grant of about five hundred twenty thousand dollars for that portion, which would bring the grants granted from the commission to about one point one million, roughly, for phases one and one A. In phase one B, which we were discussing last week, which is still open for discussion, they were not here today to make any final action on phase one B. We're still waiting on information from the commission until they do on the moment. But we're looking at a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for phase one B, which would bring the total grant to about one point five, one million, five hundred fifty thousand dollars, roughly. The budget that was published, the information at the time that the funding for phase one A was being discussed, showed a total project cost of seven point eight, seven million dollars. The total requested grant at that time was five million, two hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred ten thousand dollars. Now, that grant application has not been processed, but that was what would be the total grant request the county would make based on those representations. It was that budget that was used in the bond election, which was passed and gave the county the authority to get, put a float four million dollar bond to pay for the funding. But as we learned last week, none of that money has been drawn. There's been no debt issue at this point in time for the work. There is no schedule that has been agreed to that I've seen or signed by the county or by the historical commission, which would bind the county to make these repairs and renovations at any given time. And I don't know what the current status of the historical commission's grant funding authority is. I do believe that the documents I showed said there was up to six million dollars available from the commission, given the fact that we've asked for about five, we already got one and a half million. We're looking at the total capacity from the commission of maybe four million dollars, a little bit less than four million dollars for a final grant for phase two, which would be the completion of the courthouse, which would leave somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four million dollars, one accounting fund to complete the project from where the courthouse is completed down, but in year and next year. The only issue with scheduling that I saw in the documents that I have was with respect to the work done during phase one A and the foundation repair, there was a, there was a historical preservation antiquities permit that was issued that originally was set to expire in July, two thousand and fourteen. The work wasn't quite finished at that time. At the time, Judge Butler's petition for an extension of that permit, that was granted, and that was submitted February of this year, two thousand and fifteen. And I believe that work is done. So, I don't know if there's anything else with respect to schedule that we're concerned about that is out there right now. The work for phase one B has already been bid, proposals have been received. We've got contractors who've made proposals for that, we've ranked them. We're waiting on the final determination by the commissioners' court on the grant and the easement with the historical commission before we sign the contracts with the contractor to get that work started, so that we'll know we have the four hundred thousand dollars reimbursed funds from the historical commission to help fund that work. The budget for that work was one point one million, if I recall correctly. And we got bids and contractors for the base amount below that, what the alternate still we've asked for, we're still below the budget. So, we would be looking at county funding of probably five hundred thousand dollars, I think, if we did the complete scope work that we did for roof renovations for phase one B. And that was matching funds, obviously, from the county for the grant. That's all the information I was able to gather in the last few days for the previous easements and the grants. Now, I will tell you that I compared the easement the county granted during phase one of the repairs with the current easement that is up for consideration for phase one B, and they're almost identical. The scope of the easement, the requirements on the county to preserve the courthouse, the time limits are essentially the same. So, the county has already agreed, just back in two thousand and ten, county has already agreed to, in exchange for the funding from the historical commission, to maintain the courthouse to a level of preservation where it is at the time the work is completed. At this point, of course, that extends only to the work that's been done. When you're done with the entire project, if you receive funding for phase two, the easement that the commission will want will be, in exchange for the funding that the county would agree to maintain the building in the state that it's in at the time of completion of the work. Now, as I said last week, there's nothing in either the first easement or the post-easement that would require the county to use the courthouse as a courthouse going forward into perpetuity. It was only required to maintain the building in its restored state. And I believe that was all the questions that I was asked last week, because that was the least certain that I was able to answer thus far. I will tell you, by way of an update, that after the meeting on Thursday of last week, I believe it was Thursday, y'all asked me to contact the commission and to just find out if things would be allowed to demolish the existing jail. Sharon Fleming at the commission expressed to me in a phone call that afternoon that she thought that it would be perfectly acceptable for us to do that, but in order to do it, she had to get the approval of the review board. She asked that the county send her a letter with some photographs of the existing jail, formally making that request, and then the review board would review that request and issue a letter ruling to us, hopefully in the next few days, about our ability to demolish that. I sent that letter to them, to the commission yesterday afternoon, after I'd already received some photographs of the jail from the sheriff's department. They should be reviewing that request this week, and I hope that by the end of the week we'll have a ruling from the commission which would allow us to do that. From all information I've learned from Commissioner Gower, from Susan Lee, and from Sue, from Sharon Fleming and Sue today, the commission has always taken the position that we would be allowed to demolish that facility. So, I don't believe there'll be any hiccups with that. And I do believe that that was the last, I guess, question that we had as far as what we wanted to do as far as signing the easement and the funding agreement. I hope to have that done this week. Back to y'all with the final report determination for that easement as soon as possible next week.
I have something in my mind that, to the effect that we needed in the next phase or this phase we're trying to get done, that we had to complete the restoration of the, I don't know where I got that from, though, I mean, may not be right, but that we couldn't do it piecemeal anymore.
That's right. The commission has expressed that after phase one B is completed, the roof renovation, essentially, we will have completed all of what would be considered emergency work, which is work that would be required to maintain the courthouse in its existing state, so it's not damaged from either water, trudge, or foundation shifting. That will be done. They've allowed us to piecemeal the grants together to get that work done in phases. After phase one B is done, they have stated that the next grant that we apply for needs to be for the rest of the project, which would be the largest grant, which I said, I think we have a capacity of about four million dollars left to do that, just under four million dollars, we would be applying for the commission to match our funds. But there's no schedule, there's no deadline by which we have to do that. There is, there is just the fact that we have to do it in one project.
Really? Just a second. Your scheduling? What we want to do is make sure that the roof work is under construction and almost completed before we apply for our next grant. So, from a timing standpoint, you know, we need to get that roof project going. So, when we ask for money in September, we can say, yes, we used the grant that you gave us back in April. We had that grant since April and we've not started on the roof. So, it's imperative that we get that roof project going so it can be almost completed by September when we request our next grant to finish the courthouse. We want to make sure we use all the grants we've received so that we can ask for what we need to finish it. So, that's the only timing issue I see, is that we've got to finish this roof so we can apply for the grant to complete the courthouse.
This roof job will be the balance of a roof that hasn't been worked on.
Correct. We just need to finish this. We need to start.
What do we need to do, Jeff, to get that done?
Well, like I said, the contract's already been advertised and bid. The last step we need to do is sign the easement funding agreement with the commission, and we're all waiting on approval to demolish the jail.
The jail, and from the commission?
From the commission, yes. And I, when I spoke with Sharon Fleming on Thursday, she asked if there were any other concerns that the county had with respect to the easement or the funding agreement. And I said, no, that from what we discussed last Thursday, the only open end is that, is that desire to be able to demolish the jail. So, once we have that, we'll be able to sign the agreements, I believe, and move forward. Once the, once the funding agreement is signed by the county, we can immediately sign the contract with the contractor and get that work started.
So, today, what do we need to do?
Today, we don't need to do anything. We just, we just, I just wanted to get through the update today based on y'all's questions last week and your desire to have me come back here today. What we need to do as soon as we get the approval from the historical commission with respect to the jail would be to call a special meeting or appear at the next regular scheduled meeting to get the commissioners' courts approval to sign those agreements and move forward. The other thing we can do in connection with that, as far as expediting the schedule, is in the next few days negotiate with our chosen contractor to see if they have any issues with the contract documents we've published for them. If they don't, then we can bring that contract to the court at the same time as the funding agreement, have the court review, consider, potentially approve that contract, and sign it after that meeting so we can get that started.
What does, what does finding the easement have to do with the jail? The jail's going to be, the issue with the jail's going to be the same with the old contract, with the old easement, or with this signed easement? It's not going to change.
Well, finally answer that, the difference is, is that the concern right now is that the easement readings are no alterations to the property. Can you mag without the approval consent of the commission?
But it didn't.
The jails, it did, but, but, but that easement was limited at the time of what we were reviewing right now, to the return from this court, that we have the right to do what we want to do with the property because the jail sits on the property where the courthouse is.
Well, it won't hurt to wait and get that matter cleared out.
I don't perceive the issue.
I'm confident they're going to lose territory on the jail.
Mr. Chapman, what kind of timeframe do you think, excuse me, the commission might be on as far as approval on this item about the demolition of the jail?
When I talked to Sharon last week, she said she was hopeful that the review board would be able to review the photographs of the determination based on the information that we sent within one to two days. And she knows it's, it's an imperative for us, and they also want to see the work get done. And I wrote a letter to her inviting me to meet in college, wanted any additional information. And I didn't hear anything yesterday afternoon, I sent a letter in the morning. I'm checking under office today to make sure that we're good as far as the information. I would certainly hope to have a determination from them by the end of the day on Thursday.
Okay, whatever. Whenever it's necessary. Well, I think that, I think I want to see Mr. Chapman deal after them to review the contract and negotiate with the, like you said, at such a point.
Yeah, we've got that, we already got the authority to do that based on what it did with the project. It's just a matter of engaging the contractor discussions, which I think that Commissioner Gower's already sent a letter then, telling them that they're the highest ranked offer. We invite them to let us know if there's any concerns with the contract documents we've published. Pete and I will discuss it and make sure that we're good to go, and I'll talk to the contractor if we need to. But I haven't heard anything, so I presume we're in good shape.
Maybe you've heard anything.
Yes, I don't know I haven't heard anything. I want to make several comments about this. One of them, it is imperative that we get this started so that we can apply for the following, for follow-up completion grant. As far as the amount of money, for what the commission has paid for professional services, it's not included in these figures that Jeff stated while ago. So, I don't know whether that's deductible from the six million. So, like I said last week, it'd be probably above three million, somewhere between three and three and a half million that we might be able to afford to find a grant. Okay, this particular contract, he said that it cost us five hundred fifty thousand dollars. It cost us more than that, than just one point one million, because the grant is only for four hundred and fifty thousand, it's not for fifty percent, but then the fourth thing's up. So, it costs a little more than that for the term. On our courthouse building, we have been under suspension from TAC on insurance. If there's any damage done by water getting into it, that will be paid for. You know, if we had a storm now at work down here, there's some exclusions in that. And so, that's part of the reason why we applied for this grant for the roof to complete it, to get that done, so that we can get off of that insurance suspension for it. So, here it is. I hope I covered everything that I thought of while there was going to talk. Anything else?
I have the recap that you requested last time, when you ready for me to, with the exact numbers.
Okay. Why don't you, Jeff, once you stay over there, and you get up with Jeff and y'all together, do whatever you're going to do.
Jeff was giving you general numbers based on construction cost, and as Pete said, there's a lot of other costs associated with the project. In your packets are the documents that I, every time a bill is processed from the auditor, we give you a chart that tracks all the expenditure of the different phases. So, in your package, you'll see three phases, and it's multiple charts that track, like I said, all of the expenses. And, and so, there's a lot of support documents in there, but I did a recap for you because we could be here, you know, past lunch, we went through every single page in all of those charts. Essentially, you've received, you know, you started with phase one, and in phase one, if you look at the chart that I just passed out, the THC grant was six hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Your out-of-pocket, which is the difference between your total fund spent and the grant, is four hundred and sixty-one thousand, zero fifty-eight, seventy-one. I have an LMD chart and I have an auditor's records because Luana and I work closely together to make sure everything's tracked, and we reconcile those on a regular basis. At this time, the, our LMD chart shows one million, zero seventy-eight thousand... At this time, the, our LMD chart shows $1,078,924 has been spent total project. So that's construction cost, fees, abatement, you know, everything related to the project. The auditor's records show $1,071.43. So we're up by about $8,700. And we know where those are. It's just a matter of what things may or may not have been put in that phase and need to just move around. So like I said, we work together. There's a lot of paperwork that goes through and we can make sure that we're reconciled.
If y'all know where they are, why haven't you?
Because it's an ongoing monthly thing. And, and for this month, we don't have it reconciled back. I have a, a cost in there for the Geotek that is not, is not shown in her record. So it's just a matter of moving it.
The Geotek cost has been paid. It just was not transferred to Gina's tracking spreadsheet of actual costs. She has added it in this morning. So those, that full $9,747 of the entire project has been identified and added to her spreadsheet.
Good. Could I ask a comment? On the, on the $8,000 difference in there in that first line, I believe that was repaired to deter roofs. And Boyle said y'all can hire the roofers separate from the contract. Could that be possible?
We have, that one's covered already. It is, it's a matter of, she has a chart and I go through and we highlight back and forth. And it's a matter of where something got allocated. The funds have been spent for the courthouse. It's just which phase they got allocated for. And, and so like, this is an ongoing. Every month, we have to go through this in order to reconcile our, our charts and make sure we're 100%.
If y'all have it, and why don't we have?
You do. Every time we send in an invoice, we, we send these charts with the invoice as well as anytime I do a presentation. But we haven't done a presentation on these phases in years because you've been finished.
Well, I'm not sure I agree, but.
Okay. Well, whatever you would like for me to do, I'll make sure that you are, are satisfied that you're in the loop on, on these.
I want to be sure that we're in the loop and that we know everything that anybody needs to know about this. I don't care about anything else in particular. But if we're going to, in a timeframe problem, we need to know where we are all, all the time. I don't feel like we do, but perhaps we do. I don't know whether it is, I recognize that that's possibility, but.
I'll work on that. Then you have the charts there in your packet. Okay. So then Phase 1A, your THC grant was $523,105. Your out-of-pocket is the difference between the total amount spent. So you see on the LMD chart, $1,886.089 and out-of-pocket, $1,0362,984. So that's your out-of-pocket and your difference. There's $965. I have some placeholders in my chart that Luana doesn't have because there's some amounts remaining to be paid on some of the items that we haven't spent all of the money in the budget. And so she only tracks actual expenses. I wanted to track what I know is going to be a bill that's going to be coming in so we're not surprised later. So that's the difference on, on that one. So your, for your two phases that have been completed, your THC grants add up to $1,149.71. Your out-of-pocket is $1,824.042. And your total spent to date is $1,965.013. When we go to Phase 1B, which is the roof, your amount that THC has granted you is $450,000. Skip past the out-of-pocket and go to the LMD chart. Your budget to this date is $1,324,000. As Pete said, that's your construction cost budget of 1.1 million plus your other costs that you incur related to your project, professional services, et cetera. So $1,324 is your total budget. If you spend the $1,324, your out-of-pocket cost will be $874,000. When we bid the roof, the base bid of the roof did come in, in the 800 and something thousand range. And then with, if you add your alternates on there, the alternates are to do the turrets and the chimneys with the roof. The reason being, they're integral with the roof. And if you do the roof without them, you'll have to tear off part of the roof in order to put them in later. So it's better to do them now. They were not part of the original base bid because our base number was 1.1 million and that's what the court felt like they wanted to spend. So we took an alternate in case the base bid came in lower so that we could tell the court how much more it would cost to do those turrets and the chimneys now, which is the better, better option. And the alternates, if we add those two alternates on there, it adds $115,000 to that 1.1 million. So that's what that $115,000 is. If you stay with just the base proposal and you do not do the turrets or the chimneys, your project budget stays at 1.324 million. If you do the turrets and the chimneys, you will add up to $115,000 depending on your negotiation with the contract, with your contract. So potentially, your total funds, when you're finished with Phase 1B and you spend all of your contingency, you would be, you would have out-of-pocket 4.404 million, excuse me, you would have spent 4.404 million. Your out-of-pocket would be 2.813 million. And you will have received 1.590971 from THC. And then you were discussing what your potential max funds and, and max amount that you could get. If THC maxes out at $6 million for you, you could receive another $4,490,029. Okay, and then, as I said, this chart is backed up with all of the documents that are in your packet that have every expense that has gone into this project, every bill that's paid, that's come through our office and then passed on to the auditor's office. Questions?
Yeah. I've probably heard this the last time and I've slept since then, so forgive me. But this last segment, when 1B is completed, does that include the clock tower and all of that?
No, sir. It does not include the clock tower. That will be part of Phase 2. And what we've done is we've structurally designed so that the clock tower, the roof, that portion of the roof can be removed. It's not A, it's not the slate roof. It's the copper. It'll be removed and, and installed at that time.
I just wondered because you mentioned about completing the roof, so I didn't know.
Except the clock tower? Yes, sir. That's correct.
But to do the clock tower, it does $115,000?
The clock tower's not on the table. That was going to be a tremendous amount more. It's to do the, the turrets and the chimneys that are integral with your slate roof around the edges of the building.
To do exactly what?
It's, it's the turrets and the chimneys. I have the drawings if you wanted me to show you. Around the, the round parts.
Where do you have them?
I have them right there in my briefcase.
I want you to show them. It's a little bit.
Okay.
Jeff, I'm going to check it. It's very simple, but it's, it's got to be just talking about. Way back, just a little deeper.
I'm sure the rest of the court will think I'm a late comer.
So if we look at it in plan, these round parts, which is the round parts of the, those round conch holes on there, those are designed to go all the way up. And then you have a chimney here, 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 here. So if we look at, that's your plan. And then in elevation, here's your chimney. So that chimney that shows the historical chimney as well as the turrets. These are the turrets where it's flat right now. That originally, you know, was designed to go all the way up. You can see how the roof runs into it. So if we do it later, we'll have to tear off some slate sheels and, you know, modify what we've already done versus doing it now.
It doesn't make any sense to do it later.
I agree. No, sir. Just not.
Okay. Unless, unless we decide to do it later, which I don't understand the court even considering that. We've been told in fees that the people of this county, I think, and I think we need to get it done. I want to, I want to be sure we're ready and that we get moving and that we do everything we have to do to finish it. Jeff, are we on the right road on this thing, do you think?
Yes, sir. One question that I have as to cleaning the entire project. As you know, I've been looking at it and drafting some modifications to your contract with Fisher Heck for Phase 2. I spoke to Louis Fisher yesterday. The contract that he sent initially to the county that he proposed we sign was for $200,000, $203,000. It carried us through the design phase of Phase 2. It did not have in that contract any construction-based services, which the architect only performed during the construction of Phase 2. And he intended his charge, when he spoke with Judge Butler, was to do enough work to get us to the point where we could, in the fall, submit to the commission plans and drawings, which should be required for getting the final phase grant done. But that he would ask to separate out from the work any construction-based services. The question I have for the court is whether that makes sense at this point in time now that there's been some turnover? Or if we want to have Fisher Heck handle both the design and the subsequent construction services, which is what's normally done. The construction services, of course, come in after the project has been bid and awarded and contractors engage working. It's customary to do it that way because the architect who designs the plans is typically in charge of the, saying the construction in the sense that they want to make sure that the work is being done already with their documents. I don't know whether we'd get any efficiencies in having a contract signed now with Fisher Heck from full scope. It'll be more than $203,000 because the price he gave was just for the design work. But I suspect we might have some inefficiencies if we go back to it later on and ask for construction-based services at some point in, I would imagine, early, either late to this year or early 2016. That's like the consideration. I have completed, I've completed my work on the contract. As the guest show July called him. If we choose to go with the full standard scope of the 101 contract, which is the document he proposed we use, which is a professional services agreement with the architect, it would include construction-based services that would be agreed to by the county under what I presume that it would be a revised estimate.
Where do we go from here?
Well, we need to finalize that contract. Really, the, the only unanswered question is just that. Is whether we want to have, ask him to provide us an estimate for, for contract with construction-based services or leave it at $203,000 and go back and renegotiate with the, we have the grant, we have the contract in select. It would seem to me to make more sense to have a complete agreement in place and ask him to, to provide us an estimate. And he's volunteered his conversation with me yesterday to come meet with the court when we consider the contract so that he may answer any questions y'all might have of him with respect to what his services will be and what his work should provide.
When?
We can do that, we can do that as soon as, I would suggest we do that as soon as possible. It would seem to make the most sense. We're going to have a meeting to vote on the Phase 1B easement once we get back to the commission. And also to vote on the contract, the contract for 1B, to have this on the same agenda so that we can tackle all three items in one meeting. And that can happen as soon as, hopefully next week, once we get back to the commission.
So we, we need to wait until we hear from the commission?
Yes.
And then we need to call a special meeting?
That's right. But we can, we should be able to handle all three of those issues at the same time. But once that's done, then we'll begin, be able to begin work on Phase 1B. We'll be able to begin the design work for Phase 2, which gets us up to the point of requesting that last grant.
Pete, what's your expertise on this? What, what you, you've been watching it, making it along? Is this the right path to the bottom?
Yes, we need, I feel that we need to contact Fisher to complete the, the construction plans separate. But we, we do want to cause somebody to belong in this but we call two people to completion of it at the same time. Even though we don't need to sign that contract in this year because we don't know whether we'll have a grant to do it.
Well, we can sign the contract. If the project ever gets built, we don't know, we don't know the time.
You, you put it in? What's the next step we need to take today?
Today, I think, I think.
We're waiting.
We're waiting, we're waiting for the commission. And I'll try to get with our selected contractors to negotiate the price down as, as we've asked them to do for Phase 1B and bring to the court a final contract, a final easement and then a final design contract. And that's how we make it hopefully in about a week's time.
Well, I feel like this is important to the community and we need to all understand that we need to push this thing along as, as well as we can. And with, with proper, proper work attitude, as fast as we can, to get it completed. But not to the extent that we cause problems by trying to be fast. I just feel like we need to get through with it. Get it behind us. Go ahead.
I have a spreadsheet that shows all the simulation. Can I share it with y'all?
How else would we get your expertise if you did? We'll pass it out if you would.
And I would, I'll also talk to Jeff about some of these figures too. Because what I have in my spreadsheet that might not be in Lorain's is, you know, I take one step further from what we've already spent and what we planned to spend for 2015 and look at what these possibilities are for the final cost of the courthouse. I have a copy of the spreadsheet.
Is that just one copy?
No, it's, I have one.
I mean, it's one for each one of them?
I have one copy for everybody else.
Oh, good.
Because I know Lorain, Lorain mentioned quite a few figures and I wanted the, everyone here in the audience today and all the commissioners to have a copy that can help them track. And I'm trying to make it self-explanatory, but it's kind of difficult. But the, I think the main point that we are all pretty clear to where Lorain had explained it, we have spent, THC has granted us 1.590971 million is what they will have paid after we finish the roof. And we will have spent 2.813043. The county will, will have spent 2.813043 after we finish the roof. So our total amount spent at the end of 2015, with the completed roof, the west wall finished and the foundation, is 4.404014, what's that? 4 million, .404,000, is how much we will have spent after the roof is completed. Now Louis Fisher looked at our original estimate, which was done five years ago for the completion of the courthouse. And that original estimate was $8 million. And he said, after five years, we should add a 15% completion rate. So that would, just a ballpark figure for an estimate of the completion of the courthouse. We would increase the original estimate of 8.0 million. We would increase that to 9.2 million. This again is an estimate. We're going to pay Fisher Heck under contract to go back and look at everything, all the costs as they exist today, the courthouse as it exists today. And he'll come up with a very close estimate on what that final cost will be. But basing the cost of what he did five years ago, adding inflation, we are looking at an estimate of 9.2 million. Now if you subtract 9.2 million from 4.4 million, we have yet to spend 4.795986 on the courthouse. Do you see that on the spreadsheet? 9.2 million, the original estimate, plus 15%. At the end of this year, we would have already spent 4.4. So that leaves us 4.795 as an estimate. And this will, of course, be checked and double-checked when Louis Fisher completes his work. Now, the real question. Now the real question as far as county budgeting is concerned is of that 4.7 or 4.8 million, how much is paid by THC and how much is paid by the counties? And that is all determined by our grant process. When we request that 4.8, when we request that $5 million in, in a grant to the THC, they process the grant and they will come back and they can offer us like a 50% match, a one-third percent match. It, there's a lot of, let's say there's a lot of variables that we have to wait and see. It depends a lot on how much money they received in their budget this summer for their entire courthouse project. Hopefully, they'll get more than $12 million like they got last year, but if they get enough money to cover the courthouses that are in a similar situation, they could give us as much as a, a two-thirds match and we don't have to pay that much, or possibly even better. But very worst case, even if it's a 50% badge, you know, we're looking at $2 or $3 million. And then the worst case, if they get no money at all, we have that $4.8 million that still to be spent on the courthouse. So there is a corral, you know, we are watching the speakers, THC watches it, Lorain does a great job of tracking the expenses and Pete, and it's, it's not a runaway freight train. There is a limit and there is a plan and things are really going very well. We just have to start on the road. Okay? So everyone has this. If there's any questions at all, any time.
I have one for Lorain. We have, already have the west wall done. The arch is really very, very pretty, but we've got cracks. Do we have additional cost to, to correct those or who will correct those and, and estimate of what that would be?
For these, that's all included in when Louis Fisher does his complete analysis and comes up with his detailed estimate, that will all be included. But the, but the cracks are not such a problem that we cannot fix.
I know, but it-
It's just a matter of how much, but it will be included.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be covered and it'll be fixed. And the courthouse, it really stood up very well. Y'all saw the work on the foundation. That courthouse went through a lot to, you know, remain as stable as it did, as they, you know, all the work that they did on that basement, unbelievable. We should have it up in house and invite everyone in to come and see it because it's pretty amazing what they've accomplished. Okay?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners, court? Are you underwhelmed? I'm overwhelmed. Well-
I would not pay attention.
Well, I've been paying attention and I'm in the same shape. Maybe, maybe it doesn't matter whether we pay attention or don't pay attention. No, you go ahead.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, Jeff?
I think we're good. I'll let y'all know, I'll let y'all know so they hear back from the commission and from Louis Fisher and our contractors scheduled by the meeting and that's been just clear.
And I think it's important that we take action, whatever action we're going to take, as quick as we can under certain circumstances. So if you will give back to us, we will attempt to do our part. Are we still going to talk with Louis about the construction?
Yes, I'll talk to him later.
Good. Anything, yeah? For the commissioners, for excuse me. All right, thank you. Let me tell you, I know where we are. Let's see, we're down on item 16. This is discussed act to hire two additional employees for the treasurer's office. Salaries in fringe estimated $82,000. Salaries are $31,328, $31 per employee. Number two, remodeling a supply closet, estimated $2,000. Three, purchase of desk chairs and supplies for new staff, estimated $3,000. Looks like four cents, I'm not sure how that works. Phone for new staff, estimated $1,500.5.
No, that's number five, number one.
Oh, number five, okay. I'm not very smart. But y'all do that for. Purchase of two new computers plus installation, estimated $3,000, other by my alone.
Well, I think it's like the fourth time we've discussed this. We had on the agenda the 31st and Judge Wong, you weren't here, not that you asked him to hold off until you were here and the new commissioner could come on board. So once again, I'm asking for help in my office. Just can't keep up with the workload that we've had, so I don't know what else to think other than what I've been saying all along. I would really appreciate the help if it would keep things going in my office, it would keep me up to date on everything that I need to be doing. We now have almost 200 employees that we're having to do payroll every other week, which basically I've got a line doing that non-stop, it's continuous, which we have a new system too. And that's been kind of slowing us down on a lot of things that we're doing. And once we get the know-how of the new system, it'll move things a little bit smoother. But it's just reports that need to be done. Bartley reports are due now, hadn't even started on those. Retirement report every month. New system, didn't pick up the first payrolls and now I'm having to fix that, which once that's done, next month it'll be better. But there's always, it's not, I had Roden Bridge guy come in today that's quitting, so we had to do his paperwork. We've got a new Roden Bridge guy coming in, that's his paperwork, it's just non-stop.
That should be the way it's been for a while.
It's, it's picked up a lot since October 1st because of the new positions in the sheriff's department. I think he's going to hire altogether 30 or 40 new people from my office on that one.
19 new ones.
19 new ones. So, and plus with other, other departments, it's just, we've been, we've increased our staff overall in the county.
And you're still asking for these same things that are in the agenda item, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I asked you, I think, not too long ago, is when you had made other requests for assistance, and I think the answer I got was that only during the budget consideration that was done prior to the year we're in now, for this year's budget, that you had requested funds for a one-half employee?
Yes, sir.
And what's changed in that period of time? I don't really understand.
I was trying to be conservative and not have, ask for too much, and then I didn't realize how much more the other department had for hiring, especially with the new jail and the monies that are coming in. Right now, we have $26 million in the bank. I'm always supposed to have $7 million in the bank. I'm going to have to move some money, which some of it, yesterday, the tax office deposited like $9.2 million into the bank. And some of it's going to go away because you have things for dispersments, but there's time away from my statutory duties for investments, which is not part of my statutory duties, to move that money out because the bank only wants us to keep $7 million in the bank. So it's going to come down a little bit once she does her dispersments. But there, it's going to take me two or three hours to figure out how much bills we have, what I have to move. That takes me away from other things that I have to do.
Well, that may be right. Maybe you're partially right, but you've also taken on a good many duties that aren't your statutory duties.
Well, somebody has to do payroll, somebody has to give their resources.
Well, somebody can do it besides you. You're not the one.
Well, until you change that, sir, I-
Well, we did that originally, I was not here. It was done what you requested.
And it, but part of the legislative package that the County Treasurers Association of Texas is presenting to the legislature is to make payroll part of our statutory duties.
Well, but it's not now, it's here. And you started doing it? There's no question?
No, 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 no. I didn't start doing it. The county has always done this, "Don't put this on me." The county treasurer has always-
You do not have to do it, you chose to.
No, when I took that position, this is what was handed to me.
Well, you've fully set enough that it's not your duties, you don't think?
We have a hundred people in the board.
Until you see that you can take care of the duties you have to take care of.
And I need help taking care of those duties until the commissioners change things. And I don't see that happening.
The commissioners change the, the fact that you now need the additional help you're asking for or rather, when you've never needed it before and you only ask, you only ask in the last budget time that you be given a half?
Right, because I was trying not to be too over-greedy. But now, but when they-
Why weren't you trying to take care of the job?
Oh, and I'm trying to do that now. But for whatever reason, I'm fighting.
How long have you, how long have you been treasurer?
Almost eight years and a half.
And you just started trying to take care of it now?
No, I've been taking care of it all along.
Since, since the last budget year started?
I've been taking care of it all along.
Well-
But now I need help and I don't see the problem with other departments that ask for it, not that they don't get the house all again.
Well, other departments don't do what you do or what your office does. You've got to, you've got to deal with your, your responsibility.
Right, and I'm trying to do that and you're, for whatever reason, fighting me all the time.
I'm not fighting you, I'm just making sure.
Yes, you are.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, maybe you don't understand what fighting is, apparently. But we need to get the duties of your position taken care of and you're the one to do it and not taking care of other duties that you don't have to take care of.
Well, and so the commissioner's court take those and give them to somebody else? What am I supposed to do?
Well, you're supposed to do, you're supposed to do your statutory duties in constitutionally.
I understand that, I understand that.
Is that getting done?
No, because I have other things that my office is not responsible for statutorily, but somebody has to do them.
But you don't have to.
Well, who would you like to do?
Oh, we could, we could select a number of people.
Come right ahead.
You, if you, if you have too much to do because you had taken on other duties?
I have not taken them on. The county has put them on me.
I believe that's right. I've been here all the time, but I've been in the community.
Well, apparently you need to know what was presented by the county treasurer's office from day one.
I don't think anyone's been here from day one, but I've been here 52 years and I've watched it very close.
And who goes, "Where has payroll been out?"
And we haven't been having these problems until now.
Where has payroll been?
That doesn't mean that if it's too much for you, you can't get rid of it, but you don't have to do that.
Well, until that happens, somebody has to do it.
Well-
Just like the investment, somebody has to do it.
But you don't have to. You need to do, you have to-
Who's the money in my office to do it for me?
You have to do your job.
That's what I'm asking.
What's required. You're not asking very well, but we'll, we'll consider your request, that's what we're here for. I just want to make sure we understand and that you understand what your, what your responsibility is.
I understand what my responsibilities are.
Well, then you need to give up some that aren't your responsibility.
And then why do you want people in my office to have that over to them?
I think Mr. Shawnesson may have something to say.
Pete, certainly welcome to.
Your honor, just from a historical perspective, when Judge Butler was, was county judge, there was consideration by this court of hiring an HR director. Ms. Malone-
Hire a human resources-
A human resources director who would take over human resources and would handle payroll. Now, Ms. Malone, as part of her statutory duty, she actually has to cut the checks or issue the corrective for the payment to go out. She doesn't have to handle payroll and she doesn't have to handle HR. When Judge Butler was a judge, Ms. Malone argued that it would be a waste of time, that all of that was being done in her office and that she was the person who should stay responsible for that. Unfortunately, and I'm, I'm, all I'm trying to do is lay out a historical perspective. Ms. Malone argued for this court not to hire an HR director, to leave it with her, and at the same time ask for one, in that same budget cycle, ask for one half-time employee. Now, when we talk about Ms. Malone's statutory duties, you're absolutely right. There are two things she is doing right now that are not part of her statutory duty. She does not need to be the head of HR, she does not need to be the person who prepares the payroll, she does not need to be the investment officer. Those can be moved out. So the, the only reason I point this out is, I, I believe Ms. Malone's current request is, is inconsistent with what she said in the past to this court. Also, if the court is going to give her any help, I'd suggest it be temporary as long as those duties stay with her because the court is looking at hiring a human resources director and looking at hiring somebody who would take over investments. When those duties move out of her office, or if you move them out right now, the need for these people ought to go away.
He has no idea what I do in my office and for him to stand up and tell me when I have human resource and the investment officer position goes away, that I'm going to have all this free time in the world to do other things. I don't think so, Mr. Shawnesson.
Well, if I, if I can.
Allow him to speak with a, with a rubric, please.
Let me lay out to the court what the essential statutory duties are. The essential statutory duties are, when she receives a check, she, or a payment of any kind, she puts it in the bank within seven business days.
Within how short?
Seven business days, okay? She makes a report to this court each month that shows your income, your expenses, your liabilities and your assets. She keeps a tally of all transactions, a, a, a general ledger that shows all transactions involving the county. That means everything that comes into the bank and everything that goes out of the bank, all right? So the last thing, or the other essential function for her job, is that she's responsible for issuing checks and issuing payments. Now she has to do that with the co-signature of the auditor's office, okay? We have a lawsuit. Myself on behalf of, of the county attorney, her handcuff, have filed a lawsuit against Ms. Malone. And I'm not here to try my lawsuit, okay? I just want you to understand what the duty's on. I personally find it interesting that Ms. Malone only wanted a half employee back in the last budget cycle. She wanted to keep HR in the last budget cycle and now she needs two people. You have a duty to give her the resources she reasonably needs to do her job. The difficulty this commissioners' court faces to a great degree is that Ms. Malone has not been fulfilling her statutory duties. We took a look at a six-month period of time.
They're trying to face.
Allow him to-
Is anyone who tries to face tonight trying to face?
I'm telling you, do you tell, allow him to finish speaking?
We looked at a six-month period of time of, of, of the operations in Ms. Malone's office, just to look at how, how good she was in terms of just depositing checks in seven business days. In six months, she failed to deposit checks in a timely fashion 82 times.
Eighty-two?
Eighty-two times. In some instances, more than 10, checks went more than 30 business days without being deposited, all right? Now, on top of that, we know from the last audit, and we know from, from, Ms. Malone testified before Judge Peoples, we know from the last audit that this county did, that it, Ms. Malone missed one deposit of more than $100,000 from the Texas Historic Commission that wound up with all of her reports to this court, those monthly reports she has, has to do, as, as being inaccurate. The last auditors came back and had to ask for additional pay, basically to try to balance the books, to account for money that was in the county's accounts, which weren't reflected on any accounting that Ms. Malone did. My only point out of this is that Ms. Malone really needs to focus on her essential statutory duties and establishing that she can do those before she should engage in taking on non-statutory duties like human resources, like the payroll, or like being a financial officer.
And again, tell us when things move out of my office, even when they are moved out of my office, if everything else that needs to be done, the reports that I'm required to do, and I need help with.
If I may speak on this, this is only my opinion on one vote up here. From, from what I've been, can y'all hear? From what I've been hearing here and everything, I've been here quite a while. When somebody comes and they, they have an office and they tell me they need- When somebody comes and they have an office and they tell me they need one person, two people, three people, four people, they don't need, there's been so many different obstacles that we've heard over the years that people need and don't need. I usually don't, I'll talk to them, I'll take some time, I'll talk to them. Do you need this many people? We've done that with the sheriffs that are here, we've done that with everybody that's been here in my times, in my time being here. Now, I've been, I've heard what the attorney said, that it's our statutory duty too to compensate people that need help to go ahead and give them help. Honestly, like I said, this is just my opinion. And I know that there's been some things going in the past, there may be some stuff missed and stuff like that. The human error, I understand that it happens every worse. Not saying how many times it happened, how many times it hasn't happened. But my opinion again, I say this, I don't step in her shoes, I don't run her office. I don't know what she has to do in her office. I'm not, I don't have the time to be there 40 hours a week where you're there. I don't have the time to be there watching every time she comes in or gets out of work or she takes an hour, two hour lunch or anything like that. I don't run that office, I didn't run for that office, I don't know that. I understand that our job is to make sure that all the offices have what they need to go ahead and run this county. So my opinion is, as of now, depending on what we do with the ones that you said aren't our statutory duties, if in the future we take them, we don't, we put in an HR person or not. As of now, if Ms. Biden Malone comes and says that she needs two people, regardless of back when she says she only needed half a person, I've worked with her over the years, she's been here in the eight years and she has always tried not to ask for too much because I've sat there and I've talked with her. So if she asked for half a person, maybe she was being conservative and now she realized she needed two. I'm not really sure why that happened, but I know that in the past she's always tried to be conservative with asking for help and everything because she's actually sat there and told me about it. But my opinion, this is not in a vote, this is just what I'm saying now and then I'd like to hear from everyone else. She thinks she needs two people as of now to control her office until we either take away or leave there or she keeps on giving it. I believe that's what we should do.
We've only got nine months left in this budget year.
Again, that's only my opinion, guys, I made it.
I'd like to hear from everyone.
Only nine months.
Mr. Shawnesson, you said that, and I know we have a duty to fund, to staff her office, fund the office of the treasurer by, it's part of our statutory duty. And you said that eventually, I mean, the first part, she requested a part-time employee. With her requesting now two, are we, I guess, in violation of statutory duty if she's making a request? Maybe that's not the right way to ask that question.
Commissioner, the issue is you have to determine what is reasonably necessary for Ms. Malone to do her job, okay? Here's a classic example. A constable might come in and say, I've got a big pressing, I'd really like three deputies. The issue is not what that elected, what that constitutionally elected officer would like. The issue is what's reasonably necessary to run their office. And you have to determine what is reasonable, what is reasonably needed to operate the treasurer's office. As long as you exercise your judgment and say this is reasonable, then you've fulfilled your obligation.
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one other thing. I understand that completely is reasonable and I'm not meaning to argue or anything. I'm just thinking here, reasonably, as we sit up here to make that decision reasonably, we probably should, to make that decision reasonably, we should go and sit with you 40 hours a week or something to see what exactly you have going over there.
Sure.
I'm not saying that we're going to do that, but because sitting here, honestly, I can't reasonably vote on that. I have to go by shooting an elected official, elected by the people, from what she's telling us or telling me. Because if not, I have to spend a week, a month over there to be reasonably able to vote one way or another here. I'm just...
Yeah, Commissioner, it's the same process you go through every year in the budget.
Yes, of course.
In each department, as they come to you, you've got to evaluate based on what they present, does it justify this amount of money? And so each of you has to exercise your own judgment and say, based on my prior experience, watching the treasurer's office operate, based on prior budget requests and based on the current request, what's reasonably necessary? If that convinces you that more is needed, then you need to exercise your judgment that way. It's not that anytime a budget request is made, you have to accept what's given to you. You just have to use whatever evidence is available to evaluate whether it indicates reasonable necessity or not. That's your judgment.
Same with the budgets, huh?
Yes.
So I guess during the budget process, when they took my only full-time help that I had out and the only part-time help that I asked for out, was that reasonable? You might need to question that a little bit.
Ms. Malone, that got added back in promptly and...
Never should have been taken out. Do you know that?
Wow.
Do you know that?
Wow.
You know that?
My point to the court is just this. Commissioner Resales is right. One of the factors you need to consider is what the elected official asked for, okay? And then you use your common sense and the other evidence that's available. What's this office's essential duties? What's it doing? What's it needed in the past? What's its previous budget request?
And if he's sitting there telling you that I can't keep up with my statutory duties, there's a problem because there's too much going on in that office and I need help with it.
The only reason I said that I believe that she said she needs two is because I understand that everyone's been talking about problems, human error that's been happening and everything. Well, she's asking for two and I understand the last time I asked you what timeframe would be corrected, you told me you couldn't answer that. But if two people would justify this being corrected, wouldn't we all want this to be corrected now?
Exactly.
We're starting the process of being corrected?
And here again, we're in the middle of January. By the time I hire somebody, it could be possibly in the middle of February. Come July, August, when we look at the budget again, I'm going to come up here and tell you, well, you know, maybe two is too much, I only need one. Or maybe two is plenty and I need to keep those two. And they keep the statutory duties and add payroll back into, or add payroll as part of our statutory duties, it's going to have to stay in my office.